We're going to bring the October 21st, 2021 zoning Board of Appeals hearing to order. Our first application brought by Susan Depeza of 537 Hadley Road in Situate, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with MGL 48, Section 6 and Section 810.2 of the bylaw and any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to allow the construction of an addition to a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling at 537 Hadley Road, increasing the gross floor area by more than 20%. Eric, how's it going?
Good evening. For the record, Gregory Morse, Registered Engineer, Morse Engineering, representing the property owner Susan Depeza, was just read into the record. This is a request for a special permit finding in accordance with Section 810.2 of the bylaw. The lot addition on Mr. Depeza's property, property located at 537 Hadley Road, it's in the R3 zoning district, it's 12,874 square feet in size. It's developed with an existing home, the home being built in 1905, has square footage of approximately 1,934 square feet. The lot itself is nonconforming with respect to frontage, the frontage is 80 feet, the structure is otherwise conforming. The proposal here is to add an addition, referring you to the plan here, the property line is the black line in bold, Hadley Road is at the bottom of the page. The addition is what I've highlighted in orange predominantly, the south side of the house with a very small addition on the north corner as well. The addition brings the house square footage up to 2,964 square feet, which is a 53% increase. The addition complies with all setback requirements for front, side, and rear setback. We're not altering the existing nonconformity, which is just the frontage, the frontage exists at 80 feet. I turn it over to you.
Everything's in the footprint, in the envelope, excuse me.
Correct.
Anybody on my left?
It's in the box.
Anybody on my right? Bob, are we making this look too easy?
Well, there are a couple of things.
Please.
First, I assume the house is not going to be altered in any significant way from the exterior since it was built in 1905. It could be subject to historical commission overview in that case, but let's assume it's not. It is in the FEMA flood zone, it's also in the water resource, sorry, what do they call this? Section 470, anyway. So if it's a substantial improvement, it is allowed with a special permit, as long as the improvement is consistent with the National Flood Insurance Program. That would jibe with our requirements and the building code requirements as well. So if it is a substantial improvement, it would essentially mean that the existing house has to be elevated or otherwise modified to meet FEMA flood elevation requirements. I don't have enough information to know what that entails, but that would be the end result of any project that was valued over 50% of the appraised or assessed value of the existing structure. So those are my comments.
My understanding is the applicant and their architect have done an appraisal, or having one done, their intent is to stay under the 50% threshold, so it's not considered a substantial improvement.
Okay, that will solve a lot of problems, or potential problems.
Great. Ted Eppa?
Hmm?
All right. Do we have anyone here to comment on the 537 Hadley Road application? Nope. All right. That, I will make a motion that the board find that the proposed addition showing the plan prepared by Morse Engineering and dated August 20th of 2021, does not create any new nonconformities and to the extent it intensifies the existing nonconformity, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. And to avoid you needing to come back, I would note that to the extent the proposed addition ends up constituting a substantial improvement, that such substantial improvement should comply with Section 470.6F of the bylaw.
I second.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 There we go. Thank you. I'll take it.
I was just gonna ask if I can do that one.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Oh, yeah. That's a good one. Just add in the 470.6F line. Happy to take a look at it.
Yes.
You sticking around?
Sticking around.
All right.
That's good planning.
Yep, yep, yep. All right, second application, brought by Brian and Catherine Single of 3 Poplar Avenue, Situate, Care Morse Engineering, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with 48, Section 6 and Section 810.2 of the bylaw and other relief the Board of Appeals may grant to allow raising reconstruction of a pre-existing nonconforming, single-family dwelling at 3 Poplar Avenue in Situate with more than 20% increase. Hello?
Thank you. Again, for the record, Gregory Morse, Registered Engineer, representing the property, Brian and Catherine Single, the property is located at 3 Poplar Ave, it's just read into the record, this is a raised and reconstructed, single-family home, this is in the R3 zoning district. The existing home of the property was built in 1954 and is nonconforming with respect to the front yard setback. Where the home sits, it has a 28.4-foot setback, or 30 is the requirement. The existing house is 1,641 square feet in size. Secondly, the lot itself is nonconforming with respect to frontage. The frontage requirement is 100 feet, this property has 99.86 feet, it is literally two inches short of the frontage requirement. The proposal here is to take down the existing house and construct a new one, predominantly in the same place, but we are pulling it back so that it does comply with the front yard setback. The proposed house would be finished floor area of 3,752 square feet, which represents a 128.6% increase. It brings the front yard nonconformity into compliance, we're proposing it at 36.4 feet. It does not alter the frontage, the frontage, nonconforming at 99.86, would remain untouched. Turn it over to you.
It's like the last one, but it's even better to get rid of a nonconformity.
Correct.
Anything over here?
No.
Neither from you both?
Great.
Bob?
No, I'm fine.
This one's easier. Any, this is gonna be a nice little redo.
If I could add to that quickly?
Please.
The Single's attorney, John Danahue, could not be with us tonight, but he has offered to write the decision for the board if you feel that.
That's exceptional of him. Santa Claus will take that into consideration. This is always easy.
Excellent.
Anyone from the public here on 3 Poplar Avenue? Anything to add? No? All right, in spite of keeping these moving, I'll make another motion, that the board find that proposed raising reconstruction shown on the Morse Engineering plan dated September 13th, 2021, does not create any new nonconformities, and to the extent it intensifies the existing nonconformities, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Thanks.
Thank you, Greg.
No?
Can I ask you? Very welcome. Nice.
I'm gonna call our third application. Is the applicant present? Application's brought by Peter McCarron of 82 Rebecca Road in Situate. The applicant is not present. Interesting, this only happened once or twice before.
We can go on to the next one.
Do we have the next one?
There is.
There is.
There was an amended.
A clarification. We had the clarification, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, I'll sneak a little.
All right, let's skip ahead to our clarification. Additional business, 43 Oceanside Drive in Situate, a clarification of the ZBA decision filed with the town clerk on March 30th, 2021. All right. I guess, I guess this is just me then.
Yeah.
What's that?
I thought Paul Murbido was going to be here to discuss this.
I thought he was too, that's why I didn't prepare an opening statement. Are we supposed to be here tonight? I think we are.
I'm sorry, it's 21 past on the agenda.
We are.
He might, I mean, we're only 10 minutes past. We're kinda going at record speed, right?
We are, those were pretty straightforward ones.
Let's read his letter.
Yeah.
At the February 25th, 2021 public hearing, the board determined that the Westerly property line of the locus, the lot in question, could be considered to be a side yard. By this letter and on behalf of the applicant, we hereby request the board's clarification as to whether or not the garage wall along the Westerly property can be constructed eight feet from the property line. The exterior wall of the first floor of the dwelling has been constructed approximately 10 feet from the Westerly property line. The building permanent plan submitted with the building permit indicated the dwelling was to be constructed 10 feet from the Westerly property line. The Westerly side of the dwelling has a four-foot open deck, half of the deck is two feet above the lower level of the garage. As such, this two-foot deck width is considered to be a roof over the lower level of the garage. The applicant is seeking to construct the wall of the garage eight feet from the property line. The open deck would still be constructed as proposed. Hello?
Hi.
Hey. You're up. We're talking about you.
You are?
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know, I know. I have the four items on the list.
It went fast.
Westerly.
You started us off with?
We did, we did, and we earned two applications in 12 minutes. Something makes me think this one's gonna bring down the average, Paul, a little bit. This one's gonna bring down the average.
Yeah.
That's all right.
Can we explain this?
The 43 Oceanside. Yeah, so we just read your letter, why don't you go right to, right to point?
This is a raised and rebuilt, for existing dwelling at 135 River Glade Road.
Oh, sorry. Can we, can we start with 43 Oceanside?
All right.
We skipped ahead to 43 Oceanside.
Oh, you wanna do that first?
Why not? We already read the letter.
All right.
Thank you. Sorry, I know you probably thought you had a few more minutes.
Your board filed with the board with a letter asking for a clarification on your decision.
Yes.
One of the things I thought about was that the property line between the one west and ninety-five, ninety-five Mary Road?
Yes.
Would be considered a side yard with an eight-foot setback. So the plan that was approved, it showed the eight-foot side yard setback, and it showed the main body of the dwelling, ten feet fat from that's, the apartment I just mentioned. And what I gave you in the packet was a picture.
Yes.
Took out of sight. And what I'm asking for is a clarification of, this, this is the picture I sent you, it shows that this is the second floor, also the first floor.
Yeah.
That's a first floor. That setback, 10 feet from the property line?
Yes.
That's about 10 feet. And then down below, they have a garage under, and what he, what he has is a, he has a wall here, and what he wants to do is to have an open deck above it, four feet wide. Two feet of the deck would be from the property line over to 1.8 feet off the property line because it's covered.
Yeah.
And then the other two feet would be overhanging, be open.
I think we follow you, with what you're describing, it, in order for it to be compliance, it would have to be allowed for space to be constructed within, you know, up to eight feet from the property line.
Right.
And, and that's your question, and I, I believe we covered at the last hearing that under our code, I know it's a little strange, given that it's the back of the house, but we've covered this several times before, this is a side yard setback, given the, given the layout of the abutting streets, right?
So again, what, you know, the question was, he's got these steel beams here?
Yep.
And the garage is gonna be underneath, but the wall for the garage would be, would be, would be this black line, which would be, this black line would be the garage wall, which is eight feet off the property line. And then this, this being here supporting the open deck above it for the last two feet.
Is a raised deck, which the rain can pass through, and again, under our bylaw, that does not need to comply with the setback.
It does. Are you saying it does or doesn't?
It does not.
It does not. The, the wall for the garage is, is eight foot off the property line, that wall.
Yeah, the other garage is eight feet off the property line.
Correct, and we, we agree that that, it would, and the wall of the garage would have to comply with the setback, which is eight feet. The, the open deck, although it has a support which is less than eight feet away, right, it is an open deck, so.
It does not need to comply with the, with the setback, right?
The, the.
That's correct.
The open deck is, the portion of the open deck, that's eight, that would be less than eight feet from the property line, you know, an open deck can go way to the property line.
That's what we're saying.
What we're proposing is that the wall for the garage will have a, a two-foot wide deck up on top of the.
We follow you implicitly, and the diagram is fantastic.
And then the last two feet of the open deck is supported by the.
That's right, which would come within six feet of the property line, and such is allowed under the bylaw.
Yes.
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 So, by way, I guess, let's step back a minute. What brought about the request for clarification?
Clarification is, is there any reason why he can't have the deck, this portion of the deck would be about six feet off the property line?
Yep.
And it'd be supported on steel post?
No, there's no reason why he can't do that.
I agree.
Yeah.
What I'm asking for is a clarification because.
Right, but my, I guess my question is, I'm just trying to understand the whole facts. You know the answer to this question.
I do.
Who told you that they disagreed?
There was a portion that came up during the construction of it.
Okay.
And I just spoke to the building department.
Yeah.
And I think there was a concern on the part of the abutter next door.
There we go.
So what I did was, I said, well.
You'll get a clarification.
I don't think we need to refile, let me file a letter with the board, ask for clarification.
There we go. Now I feel like I'm up to speed.
You submit with this, and the picture answers the question.
Very helpful. Yes.
All right, thank you.
Of course. Does anyone in the public have any clarifying questions about? Yeah, a little back and forth. Bob, do you disagree with anything we just said?
No, I don't.
Okay.
At all. I would just point out that I think this, this question was generated by the last sentence in the, about two-thirds of the way down, the second page of the board's finding, which reads, "The side yard setback of 10 feet along the Westerly property line exceeds the required eight-foot setback." Now, to me, that's not.
Accurate.
That's not, well, it is, it was accurate based on the plan that was, that was before the board on this decision, was written. It's not a directive strictly, and.
And.
The eight-foot setback is in fact what's required.
I, I follow you, and I'll use this opportunity, especially since we have some new members on the board. I've been on the board for, better or worse, a long time now, and I definitely tend towards a shorter decision than many of my predecessors. And what we put in the decision matters, and in my opinion, if you're going to put additional information in a decision, it should matter to the relief that the board is granting. Making a statement about a property in the decision that does not matter to the relief we are granting, creates the implication, as it did here, and I very well may have written this decision, so I'm not calling anybody out, but creates the implication that that fact that we are naming is part of the basis that we relied on in granting the relief. If that fact changes, the reality may be, it wasn't something we were relying on to grant the relief, like this situation, but the implication is there and it can provide confusion to an applicant, a builder, or an abutter. So, I'm not gonna tell you that my decisions aren't sometimes shorter because I want to type less words, but that's not the only reason they are sometimes shorter. And that, that's something to keep in mind, in my opinion, when writing a decision. If we're relying on facts to give the relief, they should absolutely be in the decision. If we're not, there's probably a reason to not include them in the decision. But I, I would go as further as to say, those facts, well, they were accurate based on the application at the time, were not something that was relied on in granting the relief, which had nothing to do with this side back, side setback. And as long as the side setback, it was in compliance with the way the plans were initially shown to us, it remains in compliance, and I'm of the opinion that a further finding or an amendment to this decision is not necessary. Is there anyone here in the audience that has anything to ask or add about that clarification? And again, this is on 43 Oceanside Drive, we took this a little bit out of order.
Do we need an updated drawing? Because right now it shows 10.2.
No, so, that is something we could certainly discuss. In, in my opinion, we haven't required, again, they're, they're coming for relief. We make a finding or we issue a special permit to give that relief, or make a finding that that relief isn't necessary, and I think, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, changes to the building permit, which in the opinion of the building inspector and building department, don't apply directly to the relief that we granted, haven't required an amendment to a decision or amendment to the hearing. Bob, would you say that's accurate?
That's accurate.
If somebody just, you know, if we look at something and we say, oh, this addition's in the footprint, so it doesn't, you know, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and they make the front of the building one foot closer to the street, but it's still more than 30, I think traditionally you have allowed that change with, in the, in the building permit process, and not required an applicant to come back to us.
Correct, yeah.
And, and that's how we would look at this here. You know, and, which is not to say it's not, it's, it's not improper that you came back for the clarification, this is a little more nuanced. We have the deck, which isn't a deck for a little bit, under the code, and then it is, but, great, you came back and we're making the clarification. Once again, was there anyone from the public here to ask a question or make a comment on 43 Oceanside? Yes, please, just your name and your address for the record, please.
My name's Mark Hulacker, and I live at 95 Mary Road.
Sure.
Can you just clarify your clarification?
Of course.
By saying it has to be 10 feet, or you can readjust it to eight feet?
Sure, so, our clarification is a little bit of a hybrid of that. Well, yes and no. It doesn't have to be 10 feet, the, the required setback, even if we had a straightforward wall of a home, right, and it was, it was the kitchen sink right on the other side of the wall, it would need to be eight feet from this property line. This, this property line, under our code, is a side setback, that's eight feet. There is, there are wood, there's wood and steel six feet from this property line. It's allowed because that is not considered the home or the building under our code, that is not a drip edge, is the term that we typically use, that those two feet that are within the eight feet are considered deck under our code.
Another question I have is, for this hearing to take place tonight, would the abutters supposed to get notice?
No.
So just.
Yeah, and the reason, and the reason for that is, and that's part of our clarification, is that this, this change to the application, which involved the, the reworking of the deck, we are confirming that this is a reworking of the deck, which does not have to comply with setbacks, and, which is why this is not considered a modification to the permit we issued previously.
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, I would like to address this issue.
Okay.
So, the reason this came up, I had to move up, or sit here, or what?
All right, you're fine right there, we can hear you, yeah.
Have you a little history, five, two minutes?
Let's go with three minutes.
This is all based upon Mr. Ray Agan applying way back in 2009, for permits and whatever.
Sure.
The board back then approved it, okay, no problem. In your hearing, in February, that we had, you based a lot of your information on the fact that, according to your decision, that they allowed it in 2009, they submitted the proposal to you, and as a result, because they allowed it, you were allowing it.
Okay.
To some degree.
To some degree, sure.
Well, you know, a lot of abutters, you know, protesting and all that kind of stuff, and, you know, long hearing, and, you know, involved in whatever, but you made your decision, and in full swing of decision, you stipulated that you were basing a lot of it upon the previous 2009 information, even the, okay, the previous owner funded the property prior to Mr. Ray Agan, in 2015.
Okay.
In that 2009 decision, or whatever, okay, the condition for that, condition set from ZBA for the building of that property, which is almost basically the same as you submitted in 2021, the condition was that it be built upon tires. So after your decision was issued, people were waiting for the property to mock, and then all of a sudden, up shows the digger, it digs out this foundation, and, you know, and it's way close to our property, and here it's, and then the cement guy show up, and they put it in, and make a, one in town hall and say, this is definitely looking like it's too big, too close. So I was told, nothing to do about it, and we start building.
Okay.
So, they start building, so I can back up here, and I can, I'm talking to the builder for the fact that he's showing the plans, and, the concrete guy says, I'm gonna go this way with this foundation and everything. And builder says, yes, it's just an half, we have a garage.
Yep.
We're deep the house.
Yep.
And we're gonna go all the way to the.
Six feet.
Six feet.
Okay.
And I say, well, that's, you know, to me, on your proposal during the hearing, all they stressed was this open porch, and then I realized that you wall with property line, and whatever.
Sure, so, so just to pause you right there, as part of the original decision, anything within eight feet from your property line does need to be an open porch?
Correct.
Okay.
But in that first decision, 2009, the condition given for the property built.
Yeah, but that's, that's not a decision that's active anymore.
Okay, well, it is, not, it's not active anymore, but you based a lot of your information in your decision.
We may have based some, I don't remember, I didn't review those minutes, but we didn't base that on any of our decision from, whenever it was, from March of 2021.
That's what is confusing to the abutters.
Right, I, sure.
Depending upon it.
We can, we can cut to the chase, what's confusing to the abutters is how close the improvements on this property are to their property line.
Right, because, but I, but again, I am educated, in fact, I have a say, boy, the problem is, we're not six feet from the foundation, from property line.
Where are we?
We're 5.8 feet.
You, so you measured?
I measured.
You measured, and Paul, you measured?
I measured based on.
And Paul, you say it's six feet? Okay, so, here's the deal, and we've done this before, Paul holds a license that relates to measuring, and I'm guessing your current or past career is something other than being a licensed engineer?
It is, but I used.
So, so, okay, sorry, sorry.
I used the bounds.
I, I understand, but sorry, when that happens, I've, I've held firm on this before, and I, and I feel good about it, if Paul says six and you said 5.8, this board's going with six as long as I'm on it.
Okay.
All right. Even so, it could be 2.8, and it wouldn't make a difference.
For the porch.
That's right. Are you saying that the garage building living space or habitable space inside of 6 feet from your property line?
That garage, okay, was going over to the 6-foot line until I tested it. And now, okay, because the decision says 10 feet. And again, the abutters...
Does the decision say 10 feet? I don't think the decision says 10 feet, but let's check. Well, you can...
And that's why when I saw the plan...
The decision doesn't say 10 feet, but...
Hang on.
Sure. If the decision says that they can only build within 10 feet of the property line, then we have something else to clarify. But she just read it, and it doesn't, I don't think it says that. And if it did say that, would have been good if you led with that, because that would have been, that would have been more of a sticking point. So, go ahead, and if you see that the decision says that the improvements along your property line need to be 10 feet from the property line, then we do have something else to talk about.
Side setback of 10 feet along the property...
Where's that? Where's that?
Exceeds required 8-foot setback. Because that's the plan.
Yep, so, hang on, let me clarify that, which is what we clarified at the beginning of the hearing. The plan that we had said, oh, we're going to have improvements 10 feet from the property line. That exceeds the 8 feet that is required. The clarification that we gave tonight is, what we were saying there is, they are allowed to build up to 8 feet from the property line. We also clarified tonight that that is what they were doing. The improvements that extend within the 8 feet would be allowed to extend right up to the property line, because they are not improvements that are subject to the setbacks under our code, because they're...
Well, this is the open board, nothing to do with...
That's correct.
But the reason we brought this up, after talking to builders, is nobody is allowed to do about the garage part, which is, again, not required, not required.
Yep.
I understand.
Sure.
Initially, they were going to go all the way to 6-foot, but I brought this back to the sidewall garage, can't do that, it has to be 8. But according to what the abutters say, we're holding, we're not holding it 10.
Nope, that's not, so, you were all good until our last part, that's not what that says?
So, what happened was, I come up and see Mr. Duggan, and Mr. Duggan talked to me, I stressed my concerns.
Yep.
Okay, all the builders, he said, you should stop this until we figure it out.
Okay.
And then same day, Mr. Duggan went down, had Mr. Mirabito down there and his surveyor down there, and they agreed to hold through the 10-foot setback during that meeting.
So, this is another issue we've dealt with on this board, is the implication or one person's interpretation of a private agreement that has nothing to do with this board. We cannot enforce private property agreements. If you had an agreement with your abutter that they would only build 10 feet from your property line, that's an agreement. And if it was a good agreement, especially if it's in writing, it might be a fully enforceable agreement, but it's not enforceable in this venue.
I'm addressing the private agreement.
Okay.
The thing was, Mr. Duggan, who was a town employee or consultant, the builder, Mr. Mirabito...
Yep.
Meant on that day to address my complaint.
Sure.
And they agreed at that time, okay, to stick to the 10-foot setback upon the plan that they gave us.
Sure. So, here's another deal, and I'm sorry, and I know Neil well enough that I know he won't take this the same way. Neil was an expert on situate zoning before I was an expert on using the toilet, and I acknowledge that. But unfortunately, in this day and age, my vote is bigger on the interpretation of this decision than Neil's. So, I don't know what he said, and maybe he said exactly what you feel that he said or think that he said, but this applicant is allowed to build up to 8 feet from the property line for habitable space that's subject to setbacks, and they're allowed to build right up to the property line for an open deck. And that's the clarification we're making tonight. There, the code does not require them to build 10 feet back from the property line.
Well, that's where, again, we're semi-confused, because the plan has been, they agreed, I brought this issue up, today at the meeting, Mr. Mirabito was present.
Yep.
Okay. And also having your decision, next paragraph down...
Even though Neil was present, all that was, was a private meeting between landowners and builders.
And Mr. Mirabito.
Yep, landowners and builders, I was looping him in with the builders.
So, we agreed with them, why are they allowed now to readjust it?
Because I wasn't at that meeting.
Okay, so...
These guys weren't at that meeting.
And also during your decision...
Yep.
After the meeting, it says that the applicant will not apply for any new adjustments after your decision. So, here we are.
Yeah, we're clarifying that this is not an adjustment under the terms of the relief that was granted. This is something that is fully allowed under the code. Keep in mind, I've said this before, I think it's a little bit crazy that in situate you're allowed to build a deck which can be 8 feet off the ground right up to your abutters' property line, but that's what the code says.
And I'm willing to deal with that.
Okay. Can I hold you to that? Can I hold you to that?
Yeah, I have a problem.
Okay.
Open deck.
Okay.
I'm addressing the fact that, that you had your plan, that 10 feet, 10 feet, 2 inches, you approved the plan...
We approved the plan to be no closer than 8 feet. That's the clarification we're making tonight.
But again, your decision has been on, works on all these years, all these months.
Yep. That's not what the decision says.
So, just... It says 8 is required.
It says 8 is required, and that's what it meant, we're clarifying that tonight, and we are unfortunately going to have to move on.
The other thing again, I was brought to the board.
Sure.
Not the board, the town, the building, you know, I agree. So, we adjusted, got the pressure test ties, that's no problem, all that kind of stuff. I got to talk. But also during this, I was brought to the fact that the conservation committee, you know, you guys know that?
Okay, good.
But in, we're going to some intent, and then the meeting, and then this hearing after the conservation committee...
Yep.
There are also intent specifying that all their filings, whether porches or open porches or deck, would be on soundings.
So, you just said you know that we're not the conservation commission.
But, and then number two, okay, during remission, and whatever, they address certain issues.
Yep.
So, Mr. Wayage and his crew have submitted information to them.
Okay.
And then just told Mr. Gardner, again, building problem.
And...
And again, so that's why we're upset that in your decision, 10-foot or in the plan, and now they want 8 feet. And then who knows what's going to happen with this?
Okay, so, we just talked about apples for a little while, and then we said we don't like oranges.
We're just showing you that for all, that it's not just one of them.
So, what I need to tell you is that from the point of the view of me, I don't want to speak for them, but as the chair of this zoning board, there has been nothing sneaky or curvy about this application whatsoever. They are building a property which the only thing that's making it interesting, and honestly, I think the only thing that's making it be here, is that it's a property that is the last property in between some of abutters and the ocean. This happens every time it's the last property between some of abutters and the ocean, and people accuse the applicant, who I'm sure paid handsomely for the property, of doing sneaky things and trying to skirt the code. They're not. They're building 8 feet from the property line the way the code allows. If you have some complaints about the code, I probably agree with you, but it sort of is what it is.
I'm just, we're just going about what we're reading from your decision.
Sure, the way you interpreted it, but I was happy to clarify that tonight.
And that's why we have, now we understand why there's a clarification.
Again, also in your decision, okay, you okayed it and approved it. You approved it based upon the fact that what you were approving is not much more different than the previous footprint of previous house.
So, that's where we can agree to disagree. But we approved what we approved. We didn't rely on anything other than the conditions we put in the decision. But, sir, we're sort of circling back to the same thing. You want it further away from the property line, and we're saying it doesn't need to be.
I don't, as far as the exterior porch, I mean, I have to repeat that, I have a problem.
Then I'm...
I'm just concerned that in the decision, it said 10, he's allowed 8, or he said 10.
Right, so, sorry, this is where we're going to timeout. Once again, you want it further away from the property line than we feel it has to be? We're here and you're over there. I apologize, I feel that we fully clarified it. Two or five minutes became 20. We're still talking about exactly the same thing. As long as the living space stays 8 feet from the property line, we'd like to clarify it's in compliance with our prior decision. I, I guess...
And is the garage considered living space?
Is the garage considered living space, Bob? Yes. Yes. For the purpose of the code, yes, the garage needs to be 8 feet from the property.
Right, and that's what we've been presented with, yes.
If it is not that, that's another problem. That would likely be a derivation from our decision.
And then again, who does the admin, because that's the requirement?
Sure, so, really whoever Bob's office feels is appropriate, I'm not sure, it has to be one person or another?
Typically would be Cross Engineering.
Yep.
Since they were the original...
Sure, but if they decided they didn't want to do it and somebody else did, I'm sure as long as it was done properly, your office would probably accept it.
Sign plan by a licensed registered engineer, yeah.
There you go. With that, I am going to make a motion that we have clarified our decision that living space or space that is subject to setbacks under the code needs to be 8 feet from the property line abutting 95 Oceanside.
I second.
And I don't think it's 95 Oceanside, right? It's 95...
Where's the 95?
There you go. You seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Don't believe we need a decision on that, it's just... Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are going to move, we're going to return to our third application. 82 Rebecca Road requesting a special permit or fighting in accordance with 48, Section 6, and Section 810.2A of the situate bylaw, and any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to allow the raising reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conformity single-family dwelling at 135 Rear Glades Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
The applicant is Peter McCarron, who recently purchased the existing home at Rear Glades Road. The plan is to raise and reconstruct the existing dwelling, have a lot containing 12,500 square feet. The lot is non-conforming, and it's just that it doesn't have the proper lot width. It does have 10,000 square feet of land. It does have the proper lot width through the building itself. The orange line represents the structure that currently exists, and the blue outline is the proposed dwelling, that's roughly 40 by 40. We're asking for an increase in the gross area of 267% from what currently exists. There is an existing structure to the left rear portion of the property, which is going to remain in place. The new dwelling will be on pile foundation because it's on a barrier beach. The setbacks to the existing structure are non-conforming. The existing setback to this orange line is only 1.5 feet, so we're proposing to make it 8.5 feet. All the other setbacks, the side yard would be, close to the side yard setback would be 14 feet here, the same to half feet here, the rear yard setback will be 23.2 feet, or 20 required. And this is the side yard setback line here, the dwelling is well inside of that. The front yard setback will be increased to 108 and a half feet. Currently, it's 101 feet, which is very close to the structure line, but we're going to push this back so we meet the 8 and a half foot setback. There's a new subject system upgrade that is proposed in this area here. That will be filed with the Board of Health, and we're also going to file with Conservation Commission, because we are on a fatal flood zone. With that, I'll end my presentation, answer any questions members may have.
The existing structure on block at the rear of the lot is not being touched?
Structure is still there. Matter of fact, the applicant is in front of the Historical Commission this evening.
Okay. He's behind you. Sneaky.
One down.
All right. No pressure. All right, so, sorry, that existing structure on block is going to remain, before and after? Yes or no? The, there's an existing structure in the rear of the lot?
Yes.
That's not being touched as part of the application?
That'll probably be elevated on the piles to get it up out of the flood zone.
Okay.
But we're not proposing any changes to it at this point.
I got you. And then, what's the existing versus proposed square footage? Did I miss that? I didn't see it on the plan, maybe it's in the app. I got it, existing and proposed, 1848.
Square footage, 1848.
All right. I like it.
267%.
Host Bruins games in the footprint, I love it. Said we can host Bruins games in the footprint. But, you know, other than our frontage and lot width... Good, we're within the envelope in every other regard, and we're bringing the only setback, non-conformity, into compliance. But I see the ocean. All right. Hang back over here. What about you, Bob?
No, I'm good, certainly pre-existing zoning, so...
Yep.
That's not a problem. Conservation will weigh in, of course, have to meet FEMA flood requirements, but basically looks good to me.
Sure. And let's just try to see if we can cover some of the public comment here. There'll be a stormwater permit on this, more likely than not, right? Am I wrong?
No, I doubt it. I don't think it's going to increase the impervious by more than 25% fall.
That's true. It's a big...
We don't have an increase in 25%.
Wonderful, okay.
There's quite a, there's quite a bit of impervious area on the side already.
Right.
The concrete walls and decks and sidewalks.
Oh, that's true. It all goes, not just building footprint goes into that, I always forget that. Height requirements? We're going to go right up to the maximum but remain in compliance, is that accurate?
As far as...
Height?
Yes. You would have 40 feet to the ridge, it doesn't qualify for the 10-foot extension. That's only if you're elevating an existing house to meet FEMA requirements, that you get that question.
Okay. So, there we go. Is there anyone in the audience here to comment on their 135 Rear Glades Road application? Hello?
I've got a couple of questions on the state of the project.
Sure, just your name and address for the...
Engram 14 tilde now, abutter. Just the retaining walls that are there now, and the cement walkways and the patios. This is a severe flood area when you get a heavy storm, the water down in the river. The walls that are there now divert the water and sends it over in my direction, as well as a couple of other houses. And I'm just wondering, are those walls and the patio, the cement patio, going to be removed in a way that will have a natural flow, or what's the plan?
At the present time, the plan is to have those items removed along with the house. Again, the reason this has to go up on piles is because it's on a state map, Barrier Beach, and the policy of the DEP is that any structure on a barrier beach that needs to be on piles, poster columns, in the tackle, they have to be at least 2 feet of... poster columns, in the tackle, they have to be at least two feet above the existing elevation of the ground. Reason for that is to allow the sediment from the ocean to flow through underneath the house and then to the marsh and the bath. This, this house is in flood zone 8E15, which means the first floor of the house would have to be at 16 because Conservation Commission has one foot to it. So the proposed, the first floor of the house would be about 16.2, which is higher than what is recorded by FEMA. And the piles, I believe, are about three to four feet off the ground.
Sounds like there'll be a more natural flow of water than exists now, would you say that's accurate?
It is, but that's a performance standard we have to meet under the current regulations of the DEP and Conservation Commission to draw, to have some open space underneath the house, to allow any sediment to flow from the ocean to pass through and flow into the marsh behind.
Okay.
Will fill, fill be added to the elevation, are we changing the elevation?
There's a small amount of fill to the left side of the house with the septic system, and we're to have the amount of cover over the.
To the left side on?
Yeah, the left side, if you look at it from Rear Glades.
The south side?
Uh, yes, the south side.
Okay. And on, question on the accessory dwelling, there's now sewage to it and electricity and water to it, is that going to be allowed as an accessory dwelling?
So, to the extent it's an allowed accessory dwelling now, nothing would change with that application?
I don't think it's ever been permitted that way.
Well, to the extent, allowed could be not permitted if it is old enough. The, they are not asking for any relief or any new permits with respect to that.
And as far as the flow, if the under, the underside of the, from the pilings to the ground, is this going to be an open flow, or is it going to be closed off with board and bed?
I believe it's open flow, so I'll go through it.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Something that we like to clarify when questions like that are asked and answered is that as long as it, whatever ends up getting built, ends up getting built in the footprint that we're approving, or not within any of the setbacks that would require additional relief, our decision wouldn't necessarily be contingent on his answer to that question.
Okay, that would be the Building Department?
Well, the Building Department, Bob, I know if I'm speaking for you right, as long as it complied with code, their decision probably wouldn't be contingent on his answer to that question.
The short, the short answer is FEMA has requirements for that kind of lattice work, screening of the area under the house for a certain amount of open area as opposed to closed solid area.
Right.
I'd have to look up what they are, but we'll certainly make sure this conforms to them.
Right.
No, just my question was, some of the houses that have been elevated have been then filled in solid, so there was no breakaway wall or anything like that, so it's basically a solid foundation when it was designed for pilings to let the water flow?
Yeah, there may be instances of that, although I would be surprised if they were recent, we're pretty aware of that, that requirement. So, yeah, this is going to meet the FEMA regulations in terms of that situation.
Thank you.
Of course. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am?
Sure. So, just from that earlier fellow was talking, you said something about that you can build an open deck right up to?
The property line.
To the property line, okay. So I just want, I don't think there's any plans to do that at this point in time.
Sure.
But if a deck were going to go there, would they have to come back to you?
They would not.
Okay, so we just, because I kind of would challenge where the property line is. I don't think it's, I don't think it's planned in, in their plans to do it, but I think that the property line isn't really where it is. This goes back to crazy deeds going back to each other's line.
Sure.
But 10 feet's 10 feet.
10 feet is, is 10, it's a valuable 10 feet.
Yeah, so I don't know, is there a way to make a notation, like it's, it's not even my 10 feet, I would think.
Certainly, so that's going to go a bit back to the plan that's before us, that's stamped by a registered engineer. Now that plan is going to be, you'll comment on this better than I, that plan's going to be based on the title that they have in front of them, the deeds that they were presented with. It sounds like you're questioning the validity of those deeds that they were presented with, which unfortunately is a private landowner action.
Yeah, no, and that would be without the time.
Yeah.
There's no check going in, that's, I don't think it's a problem.
So here's, here's the rub, and I want to clarify where this board and where the Building Department would sit. The deeds that were presented to Paul in preparing this plan would be the same deeds and thus the same plan that the Building Department would rely on in granting a building permit for a deck that went right up to this property line. So they would not have to come back to us, and I don't believe you would even need to be notified if they, if they applied for that building permit, as long as it was within this property line shown on this plan, and it complied otherwise with the building code, they would get the permit for that deck and be allowed to build it up to the property line shown on this plan.
So should I go back to Ross Engineering?
No, it, it's, you, you could go back to whomever you want, now we're, we're treading into the waters where I'm giving you advice that goes outside this board, but which I'm happy to do for a moment. It's a private, that's a private property line dispute that should be addressed with your butter.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Sure. Happy to answer one more follow-up if you have it there, I just, that's unfortunately the answer to that one.
No, he was saying that the, the little shed there is kind of, I think that the little extra piece there, the little house there.
The, yes, the accessory dwelling, now we're back to the south side, right?
Yeah, so I think that, I think that that, if you, if you went back to the deeds.
Yep.
That, that property line is 10 feet further. And that's where I, so I didn't know if I could make a notation of it, but.
Sure, I, so this isn't the place where you'd make a notation of it, and it's, you're, you're disputing present, the property line as noted on present deeds? I caution you to be, to be careful, old deeds can be just as wrong as new deeds can, and so that's something you gotta watch out for, but that's, the only way to note that would, would likely be in action or an agreement between landowners.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm fine with it.
We're, we're gonna give you a chance on this one, but we're just gonna go to some other folks first. We're gonna give you a chance on this one, just gonna go to some other folks first. Is there anyone else who came here tonight on this application who would like to speak? No. Yes?
Regarding the deeds, what do you go by? The mentions on the deed itself, or the block plan addressed on file in town?
Sure, happy to answer that question. So this board in granting zoning relief or permits, and I believe the Building Department, though Bob and Andy can speak for themselves, would go on the plan stamped by a registered engineer presented to them. Paul can correct me if I'm wrong, the engineer would be going on the current deeds and recorded plans that were presented to them. Paul, I don't believe that as a matter of course, you do title research behind the current deeds or current recorded plans that are presented to you. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Sometimes you might, but not as a ma, not as a rule.
We aren't allowed to do title work, is, is our answer there. But I will point out, we, we did extensive work on the slot, and we did find some existing markers if we show on the plan.
Sure.
And from there, we went further away from the property to locate more control. To verify if the lines on the plan were correct.
Sure, and I'll take a quick look at the vesting deed since we're taking a minute to talk about this, this, this actually is what I do in my day job. Do we have a recorded plan here on the description?
I guess you can kind of, I'm not concerned about it, as long as there's a deck coming up to the middle one.
Sure.
I don't think that's going to be a comment anymore.
Wonderful. All right, did that answer your question?
Well, yes, I know, but I just, the deed itself, this is not a deed, so I can go by.
Is what?
Mr. Miravino?
Yes.
A deed to be copied?
A deed and what he sees on the ground. Typically, if there was a discrepancy, it would likely be noted on the plan. Sort of a, a coming together. All right. No one else here on 135 Rear Glades Road? A lot of people tonight who aren't talking at all, sort of freaking me out. You sure?
I think it's a great project.
All right. Refreshing. With that, I will make a motion that the board find that the proposed raise and reconstruction of the single-family home shown on the plan prepared by Ross Engineering and dated September 14th, 2021, doesn't create any new non-conformities. To the extent it intensifies the existing non-conformities, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and the board grant the requested relief. I second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm just gonna write that one. I can do it. Sure. I'll do that one. Okay. To the penance. We do have minutes. I gotta look at my sheet to remember which ones they were. I remember reading them when she sent them around. What minutes were they? They were September. Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. I have reviewed the September meeting minutes, and I would make a motion that the board approve them.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. There we go. Andy, do we have anything else?
Did you copy the other one that I was probably late to, which one was the one at Three Linden?
Three Linden.
The Three Problem, yeah.
Yes, we did.
Okay.
That was our second application. Just to give you a quick synopsis, because we did get through it rather quickly this evening, that building is being built entirely.
Can I copy of the plans we had just?
Oh, we, we do.
But I see them, I've never seen them.
Uh, yes, yes you sh-
My issue is, I want to confirm the size.
Sure.
My name is, for your record, Stacy now, I'm 18 years tomorrow, I'm directly across the street.
Absolutely. Sure, I'm happy to go back for a minute, I just gotta find my plan here, because that was at the beginning. There we go, pretty popular. And so the size of the home?
Yeah, the square footage?
The proposed square footage of the home was 3,752 square feet.
Okay, and the largest house in the community is 2,400 square feet.
Yeah, so it, so to, on that.
Yeah.
That doesn't really have a bearing on our decision, it's, footprint needs to comply with setbacks.
Yeah.
When a lot is undersized, we consider if the size of the home.
Well, there's lots of lot behind them.
Okay. So when a lot is, sure, which is totally allowed.
Okay.
And when a lot is undersized, we do consider as part of our look at the overall picture whether the undersized nature of the lot and the new proposed square footage of the home make the overall situation substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. But this lot, as it exists for this house, is.
Not undersized.
It's not undersized, it's substantially bigger.
Their existing structure is 18, is 1,600 square feet.
Yep, it's a, it's a much bigger house.
It's a monster house.
Well, I, I, it's, it's really.
It's not the Situate, I bet for the, for college it is.
Okay, so.
I can show you a monster house.
Thank you. But it is, it is not a house that we ruled made this situation substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. We have a 14,000 square foot lot.
Okay.
And we're regularly constructing larger houses in Situate on smaller lots.
Yeah, I do understand the lot size.
Sure.
Okay, what's the height?
The height needs to comply with the code, they were not asking for any relief as to the height.
Do you have a comparison to the existing?
No, we do not, because they're allowed to make it 1,000 times larger as long as it complies with the code.
And what is the compliance?
Compliance is 35 feet to the midline or 40 feet to the ridge.
I'm sorry, say that again?
35 feet to the midline of the roof.
Midline, okay.
Or 40 feet to the ridge.
All right, great, all right. Then the, uh, oh yeah, so you're gonna show me the plans, can you show me how it's structured?
Absolutely. Yeah, you can have this. There you go.
Yeah, that's the.
Correct. No, no, if you just, if you open up the plan.
Yes, ma'am.
So here, you can look at one that's opened up. There you go, that's a house, that's part of that.
Yeah.
It's quite all right.
Okay, so this is.
That's correct.
So that would be, see, my house is right here.
Sure, so this is you here.
So this is, no, not me here, because that's next door, right? Oh, that's the way it is, right there. Oh, there's Peter's. Okay, and Pursued, yeah, I'm Harry here.
You're across the street.
Yeah, directly across this.
Okay.
House and Lisa's house, yeah.
Fantastic, so you're across the street, okay.
Yeah, I'm across the street.
Sure.
So we get all our sunlight from, from here.
Sure, so to, to, just to comment on that quickly, they're allowed to block out your sun.
Right.
Yeah.
It would be a real pain, but they're allowed to do it.
They're allowed to do it.
Yep.
That's what the zoning law, I will say.
So it is four bedrooms, they are going up to four.
Sure. So. Any other questions? Happy to let you take that plan home.
I will, thank you.
Sure.
The driveway is going up, what about runoff? Do you deal with runoff water runoff?
There is another department in town that deals with runoff. Needed any relief in that regard, but really not our purview.
Yeah, okay, so it's not your guys.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, okay.
It's, uh, the, the increase in.
So the actual house itself is just these dock lines?
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
And then there's a deck that's noted there.
What, you're talking about the beach what they're, against that house?
Yep.
And here, it's the, is this all concrete?
It would be, yes.
Oh, so they're building a giant.
Yeah, sort of a subjective, an objective word, I guess, but.
Well, yeah, considering the hood.
Yeah, they think it's just the right size.
Of course they do.
Yeah.
I mean, I know they need to expand, they have four floors, but they're all going up to college in the next year or two.
Yeah, but I'm gonna come over, I like drinking in this guy's basement.
He's a nice guy.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Hang on to that, hang on to that, you can have that for reference.
Could I add a question though?
Certainly.
Because it's not related to you guys, basically, what I heard tonight.
Okay.
Well, they actually, what about septic? Does they have to redo their septic?
I couldn't say, if they have a four-bedroom septic now, they might not need to. Then that's really between, between them and the Board of Health and Rosano Davis, you know, yeah.
They're holding their breath until the tree streets get done next.
That's Board of Health.
Sure.
And then the other thing is, because of our street size, they're tiny streets over here, street streets, you can't only get one cop down at a time, you have to pull over when somebody's coming.
Okay.
So they're gonna have, raising it, they have all those giant construction vehicles, if there's problems, who do I call?
So what do you mean problems?
Hacking on my lawn?
If somebody parks on your lawn, you can throw them off.
Yeah, you can.
That's trespassing.
That's trespassing, okay.
But.
If the block.
But not if they just drive by too close.
Blocking my driveway.
Please don't call the police department just because big trucks come.
Yeah.
If somebody parks an excavator on your lawn, then you call who you need to. But they gotta build a house, if a tree falls on your house, and you got big trucks coming in, we want them to be accommodating to you too. And we don't want the police to come there in case they have to respond to a real emergency.
All right, but if there are construction issues that I see, something, one of my neighbors says, what happens when it's not like law enough places to get them?
I doubt they're gonna use dynamite for raise and reconstruct of a single-family home.
It's too messy.
To be honest, be honest, ma'am, they're gonna make some noise, it's not going to be as enjoyable as if they didn't raise and reconstruct the house. I would implore you to just grin and bear it. Buy them a bottle of wine and maybe you'll get some great neighbors.
Uh, we know.
We'll just extend them the same courtesy that you want them to extend. We'll just extend them the same courtesy that you want them to extend you if you were redoing your house.
Do you think you're going to say about when they build a McMansion in a place like this, that the smallest one is half, you know, half the size kind of thing?
I hear a lot of complaints about that, but I'm also quite familiar with. There's nothing you can do to stop it.
Yeah, I know. Is there property tax increases because of?
There can be. That's, that's an issue part of the accessory, yeah. But usually value goes up, the taxes go up. But if, if you want the house to stay small on the lot across the street, you got to buy the lot across the street. That's the only way to stop it.
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Anything I can answer for you? All right. All right, motion adjourned?
I'm adjourned.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.